This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Order in six of two. And Miral Chappell?
Yes, here.
Miren?
Here.
Megan?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Laura?
Present.
And Cindy Kozinski?
Here.
So I want to just make two quick announcements. First of all, I want to thank the community. Everybody realizes I'm short and not as last meeting. My daughter passed. And I just want to thank the community, the school committee, and everybody involved who really supported my family during this time. So, thank you all. We had a great day before. This is a tough time. It's not that great, as you can see. But I've been there and here too. Thanks to all of the people in East Hampton. So, thank you. That's number one. Number two. So, Mayor and I are trying to work on the portal. So typically, if there are multiple people running for school committee, more than the six, it's our four. And that is where all the candidates get together. They're all asked the same questions. The community gets to hear their answers. And it's to feel that they understand where everybody stands. We're working on it. We have place. We have three possible dates. We are looking to figure out who we're going to have to be moderator. So, once we get that worked for, then there you go. We'll spend the time to communicate with the community. And we'll get there. When commission max, don't even think about it. I don't know anybody else. Excuse me? I said, I don't know anybody else. So now, do we have any correspondence?
I have no correspondence and I have no guests to moderate.
And I don't see much. Is Mackenzie here? Okay, I don't see Mackenzie this early in the year.
So, I also don't know if I have. I'm not a host, so I wouldn't be able to see if folks are coming in.
Oh, okay. So, thank you. Miral Chappell, usually you make me a co-host, but in this case, it's Megan has.
I'm ready and I'm ready to run this.
Can you make Megan a co-host? It's been a few minutes.
I don't see anybody waiting.
No way.
So, is that a co-host?
Yeah, I just made Megan a co-host.
Okay, good. Still nobody waiting. Thank you, Mayor. Okay.
Yep.
So, now we would open out the meeting to help with comments. And I would pass the news service. Everybody here, which doesn't appear that there is, but they will keep their comments to the next. And Cindy, it's part late. Soon, no one's coming. No one's sucking on. I mean, like 30 seconds.
Yep, so I'm just going to repeat that. We have doubt. We just opened our phone speed.
Yep. So, if you're interested in saying anything, please indicate now. And we'll give you time to talk. I don't see anybody. All right, we're getting close to opening the conference. All right, now we turn it over to Chief Superintendent. And. Have a couple people. Yes. I don't think you see them. I'm a little faster than you. So, these are the school superintendents from 2024. First of all, there's a cycle of continuous learning.
I'll share those with folks in their way first, so that the class turns them up.
Yes. It was an attachment. Are you a co-host again? Yeah, I am. Okay.
So, I can do it. I can do it.
I don't know what I have there. There were two attachments in the same. But it, yeah, they're from Nick. But that attachment was. Yes, you go to check that. No, first of all, backup information that should be. That's what I see. This one, I have a question. There you go. You're ready for it.
You could plug it right into the air.
Oh, I do. Yeah.
Like right into the podium?
We got it.
Yeah.
You gotta plug that? Yes.
Such a close, so many screens. Okay. Now, I'm going to share a screen. Sure, everybody will. A lot of hands on. I've been shopping for a sequin dress to wear to Taylor Swift concerts. I feel like that, everything's out there.
Now it is.
Now it is. Okay. So, I have shared this, but I want to share. Hard. I'm sorry.
Slow down.
You know, because it's over. It's this one.
School committee.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I just got a text message from eMedia. And they're having some technical difficulties where the audio on the stream can't be heard. So, Jackson is on his way to City Hall to fix that.
So, I'm wondering if you should wait. For the. Hello. Wow.
How you guys doing? All the mics are just off.
Oh, well. I can't. Thank you. For whatever reason, I don't have that. On how to. Thank you so much.
Can you guys do a quick mic check for me?
Check, check, mic check.
Checking, checking the mic.
I can't share it. I don't know why. This is like people magically disappear. I feel like this is a Parks and Rec episode. Always.
All right. So, did nothing come through already?
Well, there was one mic on, so we heard a little bit, but that's about it.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. We'll get this worked out.
You can go ahead and start, and I will try to get it pulled up.
Okay. Okay, so the first one is the circle of continuous learning. The fact that it's a circle is because it's continual review process. So, it only starts with the self-assessment, which is the green arrow. Goes into analysis, goal setting, and plan development, which is the blue. Then, implementation of the plan, which is the purple. And usually, there's a mid-cycle goal review, which is usually at the end of your first year. And then, you have your final at the end of your second year. And then, you have, that's just summative evaluation. So, the challenge is that I'm only here one year. And so, we could do a mid-cycle review in December and then a final one in June, or we can do the whole thing in June. The school committee can decide on that. So, there are standards and indicators for effective administrative leadership. It's actually on the form that comes directly from DESI. And it's for the superintendent's evaluation. There are four areas that superintendents get evaluated in. The first is instructional leadership. The second one is management operations. The third is family and community engagement. And the fourth is professional culture. So, at one point, there was a time when we had to have evidence for all of the indicators. However, two years ago, it switched. And now, it's recommended one or two focus areas in each of the areas here. So, I, under instructional leadership, I actually picked three, seemingly because instruction, evaluation, and data-informed decision-making go together. So, it's pretty hard to do evaluation and instruction unless you have data-informed decision-making and vice versa on all of those. So, I picked three there. For management operation, one of the main roles of the school committee, of course, is the setting of the budget and working with the chief financial officer as well as school committee. So, fiscal systems is what I'm focusing on there, the budget. Family and community engagement. The whole part about engaging families and engaging the community, I'd like to focus on. And then, under professional culture, cultural proficiency and continuous learning. So, these are my goals. You have a student learning goal. You have a professional practice goal. And usually, have one and two school improvement goals. So, this is the student learning goal. Throughout the 23-24 school year, consistently monitor and assess student progress to ensure our instructional staff implement effective and rigorous instruction with measurable outcomes. There are benchmarks that you use to see whether or not that student learning goal is accomplished. So, the benchmark would be to monitor and support principals and instructional staff through doing observations, feedback, to help them set high expectation, how they engage in all students, and accommodating diverse learning and levels of readiness. And B, to monitor and support principals and instructional staff to use formal and informal assessments to measure student learning, growth, and any necessary adjustments. And then, the evidence of that will be posted when those are completed. This is a professional practice goal. That's usually what is professionally a goal for the superintendent themselves. So, throughout the 23-24 school year, promote, monitor, and support culturally responsive and collaborative practices that engage all families to actively participate in the school community. So, the benchmark is connecting with families, with necessary resources and services within the school and the community to meet student needs, to attend a minimum of six school and community events, and to address family concerns with effective and efficient responsiveness. Again, the evidence will be posted. Okay, this is the first district improvement goal. So, by June 2024, provide effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions. The benchmark is support all administrators in developing smart goals, aligned district priorities. Excuse me. Guide, support, and monitor all administrators to ensure they observe and provide useful feedback to staff and provide feedback to administrators on effective leadership practices. Goal number two. By May 2024, develop a budget with the chief financial officer that allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school-level goals and available resources. The benchmark is to effectively communicate budget rationale to staff, community members, municipal stakeholders, and the school committee. Provide regular updates on the budget throughout the 23-24 school year of the school committee and try to identify alternative funding resources as needed.
Can I just ask a question on that? You say by May?
Well, that's when we decide putting the budget together. Yeah, you know, get the budget ready to go to school committee.
It's March.
Okay, oh, March, March 24, okay.
Okay.
So, we'll change that to March.
Yeah, I was just gonna.
Perfect. When does it go to city council?
It doesn't go to city council until May or April.
Okay.
Yeah, May or.
So, that's why I put that there, because it's complete and approved, of course.
We approve it by the end of March.
Perfect. So, this is the, I didn't know whether you had used this document before. So, this is the end-of-cycle summative report, what it looks like. That's the second page of it. And then, these are the ratings for each of those areas. So, instructional leadership, I picked instruction, evaluation, data-informed decision-making. And so, I yelled those out. Those are the three areas to be evaluated in. Four, two, fiscal systems. And that's the only one on that particular. Management operations and family and community. Focus on, well, making sure that we're welcome to the, for the community and that we can contribute to the effectiveness of the classroom, district, and community. And four, on cultural proficiency, which every district in the state is really working on that. It talks about, you know, policies and practices that enable staff members and students to interact effectively in really a culturally diverse environment. And also, teach respect for backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges. And then, always important to have continuous learning. You want to develop and nurture a culture in which staff members are reflective about their own practice, use student data, use current research, use best practices. In theory, to continuously adapt their practice and achieve improved results. And the important part of this is that the superintendent not only observes that, but has to model these behaviors in his or her own practice. And that's the end of it.
Yep. So, because of my health, I'm not running, so I will not be on the school committee. However, I've done these evaluations. So, whoever becomes chair, I will offer to show them way ahead of time. I won't be able to see the evaluations, but I can use. Actually, you've included this form, which is really cool. I'll be able to explain to them how it gets tabulated and then.
That's.
Chair announces the final results. So, I'll offer that, just because I'm really familiar with it, but who knows? Maybe you don't. We won't need it. So, the first question, I guess, is whether or not you want to do a some, a mid-cycle review? Or just wait for the year?
Repeat down.
Do we want to do a mid-cycle review? Or do we want to just do an annual review?
I think an end of the year for an interim position is more than sufficient.
That's where I'm leaning.
Yeah, that's what I think, too.
I mean, I'm not going to be here, but that would be my sense.
We don't know who's going to be here.
You're going to post it? Is that, like, you'll post all these results on the website at the end of the year?
Yes.
And then, we'll.
It has to be an open meeting.
Yeah.
So, the chair.
Yeah.
The chair, whoever that is, will get all of the committee members' evaluations. And you don't, each person doesn't get to see anybody else's. Just the chair. And they tabulate how everybody did, what their comments were, make a summary of comments, and then, that's presented at the meeting. So, that makes sense to me. My personal belief is that we can wait till the end of the year, but again.
Yeah, I agree. Given the nature of an interim position, it makes sense. Yeah.
And it certainly, just so the public is aware, certainly doesn't mean that we can't be offering guidance and.
Correct.
Course correction of any kind that might be necessary between now and then. It's just, when would we perform a formal evaluation process? It seems entirely reasonable to have one summation.
And that's often done when you, let's say, you have a brand-new superintendent who might not be gaining enough evidence. So, you want to have that mid-cycle review to say, hey, we need a little bit more evidence. This isn't exactly what we want, what we need. But I think you've done this a few times, so.
Once or twice.
So, I think doing it at the.
It'll be the eighth time.
A lot of sense.
That's all.
So, Sue, I think we have to vote to accept her goals.
Oh, yeah.
Correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, do we have any discussion before we do that?
Do you want me to move, and then we can discuss?
Yeah, why don't we do a move, and then we'll discuss?
Motion to accept the interim superintendent goals as presented by Superintendent Benanda.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion about them? From my perspective, this is what I typically see. And this is what we've usually had from our superintendents, so I'm really comfortable with this. I think Superintendent Benanda has a really good sense of what the district needs, so I'm really comfortable with those goals.
Likewise.
Same, yeah.
Yeah. I liked the presentation, too. I wish we had the technological ability to share it with the public in real time.
Just so the public knows, this is in our agenda, which is posted online. You're, you can access it right now if you want to on the East Hampton.
Cue it up and look at it.
Yeah.
All right. So, if there's no more discussion, all right.
I just, well, hold on.
Yep.
Sorry.
No problem.
Um, I appreciate especially the, the family connections and kind of the importance of responding promptly to family concerns. I do know that that's something that historically in our district has been a challenge at times. And so, I'm just wondering, in terms of evidence, what types of evidence are you hoping to, to gather for that particular area?
Probably count the number of emails and the number of phone calls.
Okay.
Because I couldn't release direct information on that.
Yeah.
Because of confidentiality.
Okay.
So, you know, just keep a record of, you know, a certain phone call came in at this time, it was responded and taken care of by this time.
Okay. That would, actually, that would just be great data for us to have, honestly. So.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate that, for sure.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else, Ben?
Nope. I'm, the question of evidence was also on my mind.
Yeah.
Just how we're going to evaluate what we're actually doing.
So, we're going to vote on accepting them with that change of date.
Yes.
Done already. Okay. We've done that already.
I don't, I thought she made a good point about why she had the original date, but I think it's neither here nor there.
Well, it's true, but it has to go to the school committee ahead of time.
Right. I think, I think you look at approval in one of two ways. You can look at approval, and I mean, historically, maybe we've learned that lesson recently. It can be approved by the school committee. That doesn't mean that's the budget that's going to be enacted. So, it, it makes sense to me to, but, you know, whatever you prefer.
I think just leaving it in for March, just so that we know that you know to be ready.
Okay.
All right. So, Miral Chappell?
Yes.
Okay. Miren?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Cindy Kozinski, yes. All right. Okay, school committee discussion on MASC annual meeting. Do you want to lead through that information?
Yes, sure. So, every year, there's a, a meeting of the MASC and also Mass Association of School Superintendents at the Cape. It's usually at the end of October. And at that time, there are some voting items that are on the agenda that only school committee representatives can go and vote on. I mean, superintendents can go and listen, but they don't have a vote. So, usually, you send one person to go down and, and vote the items. It's not, you don't have to send somebody, but usually, it's recommended that somebody goes down and votes on the items.
Do we have the date? Do we have the date of it? Is it the?
Yeah, I'm just going to get it. Right, yeah.
And have we, do we usually send somebody? I don't remember.
We used to.
We have. We have several times.
Yeah.
And usually, it was two, wasn't it?
Depends on the year. Especially with COVID, it changed quite a bit, but.
It would be good to send someone.
I think it's at least two. It, I went myself once in. It's nice to go with at least one of the person, two if they're willing, yeah.
Is, are two people interested?
It depends on the date.
Well, it depends on the date, yeah.
Let's get the conference date for you.
Because none of us are going on the 21st, I assume.
Yeah, that's true. None of us are going on the 21st.
Oh, here it is.
What's the 21st?
Candidate form.
Which is going to be with Taylor Swift. Democrats are holding up.
Also, that.
Vote for. For school community.
So slow.
That's really just a meet and greet.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a short one. Okay, doesn't have the date? Let's see.
November 8th to November 10th. Let me see.
I have been telling everybody that everything is possible in November, because everything is so impossible in October for me.
Yeah. So, it says November.
You're setting yourself up for November.
8th to November 10th.
Where do you see?
I know how that works.
There you go. Okay.
For a conference.
November 8th to the 10th.
It's at the Emerald Resort Cape Cod Irish Village in Hyannis.
And for those of us for whom this matters, because we have to take time off of work, Veterans Day is in the middle of that. So, it's only two days off of work instead of three days off of work.
It's the day after Election Day, too, is another.
Yeah.
So, there's, I can give you the full brochure.
No, just the dates were.
Okay.
I'm available if anyone else is, but I would prefer not to go solo. Also, I prefer to drive. We put that out there, too.
Versus five.
I mean, I don't like to be a passenger.
I have to, I will need to check in. I have to check in with my, my work and family.
Okay. There are many sessions you can also go to. Yeah. There's a lot of sessions.
So, what are you suggesting? If, if four people wanted to go, they could do.
Ride and conquer.
Partial?
Yeah.
That sounds good. I like that.
That could be more reasonable. I could have a quorum.
Flexibility.
What? Oh, a quorum.
So, you're right.
Oh, because she's saying four.
Four.
Good point.
We can only have three. Thank you.
Um, and the, the cost of it, I remember looking at the cost, and it was.
I was thinking four would be two on one day and two on another day.
Do we have to pay for it, or is that?
Usually, well, in my experience, the district has paid.
District has paid for it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's expensive. It's not, it's not a cheap thing.
Because I, because when I looked at it, I was like, well, I have to pay money, and it's also like three days off of work, but. All right, let's.
Let's decide at the next meeting.
Yeah, let's decide at the next meeting.
The end of this month.
Okay.
People should be able to check and know by then.
So, it's eight to the 10th. Yeah.
All right, so we'll decide next.
I'm going to send.
I mean, next week.
I mean, I'm going to forward the brochure to everybody.
It's the day after the election, which could be awkward.
That's true.
Somebody may cancel.
Yeah. All right, we'll decide on the 24th.
The other thing is, if you're not yet an elected official, then you couldn't go, or at least you couldn't be a voting member yet.
Right.
Like, if somebody won the election but wasn't.
If somebody won and couldn't.
Wanted to go, they couldn't, they couldn't necessarily represent East Hampton.
That makes it tricky for the planning.
So, that means Megan and Ben, if.
Just be confident that you're going to win.
You would be voting.
No, I think that we can, I think Laura and I could vote, too.
Yes, but for example, if somebody who's not currently serving were to win a seat and to attend.
Correct. You're right. Okay. Great.
Yeah. I don't think, yeah, I don't think that being elected or appointed necessarily matters in that context.
Yeah, it would be great if, maybe we can talk about some of the key things that will be voted on at that meeting, in the October 24th meeting, just so the public is.
Yeah, no, I think that that's a good idea.
Where kind of stuff they could weigh in on.
Okay.
Let's have a full, we'll add it to the, to the agenda for the 24th.
All righty, that sounds good. Okay, so now our business update.
I'm sending you the poll. Let me just send it to you.
Good evening, everyone.
Yeah, that sounds good.
My business report tonight consists of three items. Number one, my end-of-the-year financial report for Desi was completed and submitted on September 29th. The report, which is required to be independently audited, has been shared with our auditor. So the audit, or sorry, so the independent audit can be scheduled whenever she's ready. The deadline for the audit is typically March 31st of the following year. During COVID, they extended it to June, but this past year, they held to the 31st. So I'm assuming that's what they'll do going forward. Once the audit's complete, the report may need to be amended, and truthfully, it may need to be amended before the audit. Every now and then, things, you find something, or Desi sends you an email and says, we forgot to tell you this. So amendments are very common. I don't want you to necessarily think they're a bad thing. It's just to make sure the data is as accurate as possible, because they draw numbers like net school spending from that report. So the integrity of the data is very important. Once I get the final audit report, that must be shared with city council. So that'll be coming up. I mean, I can't imagine it'll happen like before the end of this calendar year, but she's pretty good at getting it done fast once, once she comes. And so there's that. Next item, the fiscal year '25 special education tuition rates have been released by the Operational Services Division. You will remember that this current year, we are experiencing a 14% increase in that. The estimated rate for inflation for tuition for next year is 4.69%. While this is certainly a relief compared to this year's, it's still historically high. Prior to this year, the average rate increase since FY11 was 1.86. So obviously, if you factor in this year, that's going to be an outlier, and it's going to increase that. But, you know, while the 4.69 is certainly going to be welcome to people for next year, it's still, it's not great. I suppose is how I would describe it. Districts will rely on their municipalities for support with this, as well as potentially on circuit breaker reimbursement. An extraordinary relief when you're able to apply for that at the end of February. My third item is something exciting. We have been asked by the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, to host a Story of a Building event, which, which basically is for districts that are just going through the MSBA process and attempting to get financing to build or renovate a school. And we get to showcase our new school to probably about 50 to 60 people from other districts that will come and watch a panel of guests speak throughout the day. These events are co-sponsored by the MSBA and the Inspector General's Office, and it's really designed as a forum for sharing information among school districts about the construction process. This type of seminar takes place at a recently opened school and is taught by school officials who manage the building project. It's an opportunity for district officials to share their lessons learned and best practices with other school districts, as well as to showcase our new school to people who attend. We've been working diligently to plan our day, which will include presentations from various panel members, question-and-answer sessions, and building tours. Our panel consists of many individuals who have worked on various aspects of the project throughout its duration, including building committee members, our architect, our owner's project manager, our contractor, and various city and school district officials, including Dr. Leclerc, Nancy Follinsby, and my predecessor, who, you know, really saw the project from start to finish. As you know, I came in at the tail end, and Superintendent Benanda even further at the tail end. So it was important to bring people in. I mean, the whole project in and of itself began in like 2015, so that's quite a bit of time. But it's also important to showcase that to people from other districts, to show them how long a project takes from start to finish and how leadership can often change during the process. So we're definitely excited about this. We're honored to have been asked, and, you know, we feel like we have a unique story to tell, given the consolidation of four schools into one, as well as all the challenges that we met and overcame during COVID. So that's going to take place on Friday, October 20th at Mountain View. It's a half-day dismissal for students. So we've built the building tours in to be before dismissal, because it's important for potential people to see kids in their learning environment as the building was designed to do. So very excited about that.
Yeah.
That's so cool.
And lastly, my personnel report for the month. You'll notice this month, it's a lot smaller than last month, because most of the new hires have been completed. This month, we had six total new hires, five substitute teachers, one paraeducator at Mountain View. We had three separations, excuse me, two from the high school and one from Mountain View. And we had two people within the district transfer into new roles. Our current vacancy list is getting smaller from what it was last month. We still need one paraeducator at the high school, two at Mountain View. However, Dr. Piscuini Torquay has sent some paperwork up today, so that'll be down to one. School psychologist is still vacant, middle school librarian's still vacant, maintenance mechanic is in the process. We have paperwork in Sue's office right now, just being processed. Computer technician for the district is still vacant, and our diversity liaison at the high school is also vacant. So that list is getting smaller. It was much longer last month.
Can I ask a question about that? Sorry, I guess I should have asked you that.
Okay.
I remember at the last meeting we had, we were in the process of hiring a PT, and I just don't see a PT on the new hires. So do you happen to know where we are at with that?
Yeah, this report reflects September's personnel transactions. That, that will be reflected in next month's report, which would be October's personnel transactions.
Were we successful in hiring a PT?
Yes.
Awesome.
Took a while, but yes. I don't remember the, yeah, very hard to find. I don't recall her exact start date, but...
October 30th.
October 30th?
30th.
Yeah, okay, so that hire will be reflected a month from now at our November meeting.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
We're very happy about that.
Awesome.
What time is that event at Mountain View?
Uh, it starts at nine.
All day?
Yeah, pretty much goes, we wanted to make it like start just after arrival. You don't want to have everybody coming in when buses and families are dropping their, their students off. It's tentatively scheduled to end at 3:30. It may go a little shorter than that.
You can?
Oh, yes.
I don't see why not. To view, yeah, absolutely.
I'll tell my kid to behave himself that day.
Yeah, I think it would be great to have committee members there to see what, you know, what goes on throughout the day. And I mean, some of the panel discussions are going to be done by MSBA folks that can help talk people through the process. But we had a two-hour meeting today, just to kind of go through the agenda and see who's talking when and everything like that. And the person from the MSBA that we're working with seemed very excited about the direction we were going. You know, it really, it starts with the visioning process, and then the design of the building to meet the vision and the goals. And it really comes together as truly a story of how the building was designed and then built, and as well as like some of the struggles that were faced and how they were overcome. And, you know, perhaps in the past, some of you attended one when Mountain View was in the process.
We, when we were in the school building committee, we went to other, I can think of two. Yeah, and it was fascinating, yeah.
That's cool. Yes, that's so weird to be on the other side of all of that.
Yeah, that's great.
I just have one more question about hires. I'm so sorry, I just, I forgot about it a second ago.
No problem.
Um, it looks, and this is again for September, we've had, it looks like we've got five substitute teachers. I was just wondering, are we good on subs? Like, I've just, I know that substitutes have been hard to find, kind of statewide, honestly.
I would say getting better. I wouldn't describe it as good.
Okay.
I, there's still vacancies on a given day where a paraeducator needs to cover a class or, I mean, we do hire quite a few subs, as you can see.
There's five of them on this list.
Yeah, and if you were to take a look at our active sub list that, you know, I track that, and there's probably about, I don't know, 40 people on it. But some of these people are taking jobs in other districts on a given day as well. They're not all here every day, so...
Do we have building subs that, that are like kind of there every day, kind of?
We do not.
Okay.
Is that ever a discussion? Because that would be...
I don't think we have a big enough district.
I don't know that we do.
No, we did have that.
Yeah.
Did? Yeah, to have one permanent sub that can float.
That can float, yeah.
Is that...
We've had it.
There was a negotia, I think they got caught up in the union negotiations with that, and I don't remember the outcome of it though. But that might be the reason why we don't have it currently.
My understanding...
They're paid every day regardless of whether they have a class to cover, correct? Right.
Yes, my understanding, Maren, is you're correct. Like, they've existed in the past. I'm not sure where, what occurred with negotiations, because I wasn't here. We did have a .33 building sub at the high school last year. There was a .67 FTE health teacher that was hired. And due to the shortage of substitutes, we did an MOA with the East Hampton Education Association to make that individual 1.0. And they were able to cover a class per day. But that MOA expired at the end of last school year. So currently, there's none.
I'd be interested in, in thinking about that again.
Yeah, I'm just hearing that there's a lot of challenges with the subs and with the paraeducators having to step in as a substitute.
Yeah.
And again, it's like not, I feel like I say this all the time at every meeting, it's like not just East Hampton, but we are like kind of caught in the middle of this, of this kind of hiring environment. All right.
Maren, I'd have to look back at my notes, but I think we had one, we had two.
Right, we had one for each building.
Yep. And it was, it was really helpful, because subs are such a difficult position to fill. And so having someone who knows they're going to show up every day really helped.
Yeah, it made a big difference there, but I do remember getting, being an issue about where the status would line up within the union negotiation was, so...
So maybe, maybe this year, we can fix it again.
Negotiations.
It'd be great.
That'd be great. All right, well, thank you. Does anybody have any more questions? Thank you, sir. Okay, do we have a finance update?
We've not met. We'll be meeting in early November. I'll get that agenda up on the calendar soon.
Okay. Do we have a policy update?
We had all of our children needing different things from us on the night that we were planning to meet. So we were unable to meet that night. We're going to schedule another one soon.
Okay, wow, this is going to be a short meeting.
Yeah, apologies for that.
Okay, well, done, Maren.
All right. Action items. Motion to approve the school payroll dated 9/21/2023 in the amount of $595,414.32.
Second that.
Okay, mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that what you?
Yes. Maren?
Yes, a little delayed, okay.
Okay, Megan?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Cindy Kuzensky, yes.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 9/21/2023 in the amount of $338,797.24.
Second that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Maren?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sam?
Yep.
Laura?
Yes.
Cindy Kuzensky, yes.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 9/14/2023 in the amount of $509.73.
Second that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
Maren?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Cindy Kuzensky, yes.
Last one.
All right, and this is the one that we moved from last time, and we got the update. In the meantime, does anyone need to up the explanation again for this?
No, I remember it well.
Yes.
Maybe just explain it for the public.
Why do you have to explain it to the public? Or Maren, if you have a handle on it.
All right, so the, the payroll figure in the amount of negative $330.43 was a deduction correction. So it didn't affect our accounts at all. It was just, there was an employee who was paid in the summer, and there wasn't enough of a deduction taken out to pay the insurance company their portion of the health insurance. So that had to be clawed back, so it could then be paid to Blue Cross and Blue Shield. I didn't know about it at the last meeting, because I never saw it, because it literally was just, it was the deduction, didn't touch our accounts at all. But I'm glad I was able to get that information for all of you before you voted on it.
So when we saw it at the meeting last week, we were unclear, so we withdrew that, which you would see in the minutes, and now it's been clarified, so now we're voting on it.
And so I have a motion to approve the school payroll dated 7/14/2023 in the amount of negative $330.43.
I'll second that.
All right, mayor?
Yes.
Maren?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And Cindy Kuzensky, yes. All right, so that ends our meeting. Our next meeting's?
Wait, can I ask one question? This is more of a logistical question. In terms of the superintendent search for our next superintendent, what is the timeline generally for this?
So I, I think that we need to, you need to decide af, I would suggest you decide after the election
Okay.
for how we're going to go.
Okay.
Because you want to make sure we know who our school committee is and go from there.
Yeah, it should be on the early agendas in January, once you guys are elected, once you have a chair, once you have those different pieces in place.
I just want to make sure we get a good search committee, and we are, we are aware of their time.
Yep.
Because it's a big time commitment. So I just want to make sure, and if you're a member of the public and you're interested in maybe being on the search committee, keep February open.
Yep.
Exactly.
So...
Does it need to wait until January? Is there something you can start sooner?
I think that whoever is on the school committee at that point would like to be able to weigh in on the process of how we're doing this, because of timelines involved. So I think it's better to wait until those people have been sworn in.
Right.
And you got to wait until people are actually searching and all that. So February, February cert for March interviews for a decision by the end of March is on track.
Even that, to be frank, is a little early. Some people are putting those viewers out a bit later in the year, but that's a conversation that could be added.
I'd like to be able to, I'd like to do it on the earlier side, just so that we have the time, if we need the time, so...
Yeah, so my suggestion is the second meeting that you have, that the school committee has, that's when you decide on all that stuff.
Okay, cool.
And begin that process. All right, so our next meeting will be October 24th, then November 14th, and December 12th. And again, the only thing I want to remind people, when we get the forum, the candidate forum figured out, then the mayor and Superintendent Benanda and I will make sure that message gets out to everybody. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.